Good evening, I am going to get our study session started and we have the first one is the maintenance, the Lindell Maintenance District, I'll pass it to City Manager Rodriguez.
Thank you Mayor. So tonight, we're gonna talk about the Lindell Hub, Maintenance District. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, yes. And so it was created in nineteen eighty-one and there's been a lot of changes since then. And so tonight, we're looking for consensus whether to continue the district or if we're going to have to discontinue it. And I will turn it over to Chris Link.
Okay Mayor, members of council, just like City Manager Rodriguez said, L H N Maintenance District, if you remember, we go with, to council every year with charges, city encourages charges for maintenance within this district. This district was established in nineteen eighty-one. And since then, there's been many, many, many changes. So tonight, staff's looking for direction whether to continue as normal with the district. And all of these items are kinda contributing to the question today. Back in nineteen eighty-one, there was many, many items that were specific to only the L H N Maintenance District. There was special lighting, there were special concrete sidewalks, there were special benches, vaulters, and things like that. Through time, the only things that remain are, the top picture is the fence along Sixty-Fifth Street from roughly, you mentioned the Pillsbury Avenue. The bottom picture is the First Avenue Fence, which has been replaced. And it's difficult to see, but the sidewalk, it's a special, it's called boma, bomanite, a special type of stamped concrete that was special to, to the district only, and there's very, very little bit left. Other things that have changed are, a lot of the area's been redeveloped, and through redevelopments, we've been utilizing maintenance agreements with the property owners. The X's represents places that have been redeveloped that we do have maintenance agreements with right now. This is what a, a general maintenance district look, or excuse me, a maintenance agreement looks like. It just defines maintenance response possibilities. The sidewalks, normal line, see paragraph five generally says that the city will provide one pass when removing snow, if they wish, if the property owner wishes that more, it's at their expense. We do have a couple of places, City Bello is an example of where they basically concrete from the curb all the way to their building, they do all of the snow removal. Back to our list, current services, so, when this was established, it was, it was for special, providing they have a higher level of maintenance for special maintenance items. Between redevelopment projects and road reconstruction projects, we're starting to see some of those elements elsewhere. Specifically medians. Before, there were, there were only landscape medians within the hub, now we have them on Portland, we have them on Lindell, we have them all through Sixty-Sixth Street. So it's, it's no longer necessarily a special design item to just that area. The last bullet, you know, any assessment, we will receive informal petitions. This last, this last time, we did not, but previous years, I've gotten calls, emails, asking to be made from the district or removed from the district. When I get those, we do send those to council, and it's up to them. There, there's a process that they have to submit something, write, attend the meeting, attend the public hearing, and that sort of. I'll also kinda going through some older, older resolutions, old council meetings, the first year nineteen eighty-one, when it was established, we also received petitions. So with all of this special maintenance, and it's kinda going elsewhere, we do have an option of dissolving the district. Currently, the charges are averaging around twenty-five thousand dollars. So the charges for maintenance, city will approve them in one year and get reimbursed through the assessment process following. So it's, it's ongoing, it's for trash pickup, trash disposal, there's some mowing, maintenance expenses, operation and maintenance irrigation systems, things like that, averaging a rate around twenty-five thousand dollars. In the future, with the, with, with the new reconstruction projects, I do anticipate that to be lower. Just for the, the fact that the plantings that were chosen, the medians are of that, they're, they're drought resistant variety, so I'm anticipating operating that system for a couple of years and then the possibility of abandoning it. So there won't be that ongoing charge. The trash pickup in the area, we've done different things, we've introduced our solar powered big belly trash cans that were less, require less time. We still have to go get it, but it's, it's a lot less work. And the only areas left to mow is along Sixty-Fifth Street, north, north of the hub, along the fence, there's a small area. In, in past years, there's been, there's been larger areas. And if we do decide to dissolve it, there, there's some maintenance items that could be put off or put towards adjacent property owners. Typically, the fence on First Avenue, tho, those properties that, that they're next to could, could take over that, the maintenance of that. If the hub redevelops, there's possibility for the Sixty-Fifth Street fence and that, that green area to, for them to, to maintain that also. I should say it's Sixty-Fifth Street. If there's a reconstruction project along there, that fence would be replaced at that time, and then you have to determine who holds it, whether it's residents or city, part of the maintenance agreement. That's about all I have.
Question, Councilmember Supple.
Just to make sure I'm understanding, from what you're saying, then if we would dissolve it, there would be some ongoing costs that we would have to do, and some of it would devolve to the property owners, is that?
Yeah, so, yeah.
One of the options.
So, current charges, current services, yeah, could be split up, and it could be, the city still occurs some, not as much as twenty-five thousand, and adjacent properties, property owners would take on some responsibility. It's very similar to the Boulevard in front of your house. Property owners are in charge of maintaining the whole property in front of their house, same, same.
Other questions, Councilmember Wa, uh, Troutman, Troutman, sorry. I was looking at you and said Wayland, sorry.
Thank you Mayor, and, and welcome back Mayor.
Thank you.
I ha, I have a question, when, when I think of maintenance, and I've, this is sort of the first I'm learning of the Maintenance District, my number one concern is all the garbage at the hub. It is not sightly. It's really bad, it's been bad for a long time, and I'm curious, given this, this district, do we have any flexibility to modify the scope and set some new expectations and use this as a tool to either incentivize the, a, a more sightly standard, or take that responsibility on uniply and just say we're, we'll do it and we'll charge them back?
Oh, yes, yes.
Excellent.
Yes, short answer, yes, maybe a little more complicated than that, I mean.
Always is.
The distinction between right of way private property is, is a tough thing to answer. We are, with the bins that are out there now, there's always possibility for expansion through redevelopment, things like that, we can add, we can add, but as far as trash that's on private property or generated and stays on private property, we, we don't have a whole lot of, we can't do a whole lot with that.
Oh, what does not a whole lot mean?
Well, it's, it's okay. Private, I guess, maintenance on private property. This whole district isn't, wasn't, isn't intended for maintenance on private property. Private property owners still have to take care of their, their own items. These are the, the public areas ordering the, the.
Got it.
Where we provide maintenance. Typically, you know, the fences are, are looked at as a buffer between residents.
Okay, City Manager.
We can simply look at our property maintenance as it pertains to the garbage there and see if there's something that we can do under it.
That'd be great, and, and it may be something as simple as a more frank conversation, but when I walk into the hub, and there's literally like garbage like swirling around in little cyclones, and you're just like, this is, this, it, it just, it, it, it's the center of our city, and it's, and I understand sort of the strategic long-term vision for the property and redevelopment, but short-term, there's no reason why I think it couldn't. So I know it's, it's only, it's only adjacent to this, to this issue, I just, when I heard maintenance, I thought, well, maybe this is an opportunity to bring that conversation in.
Yeah, I just, I just wrote an all that might be just a, a conversation with the problem.
Excellent. Councilmember Wayland.
Um, I'll just echo, I also, I heard from a resident concerned about trash in, not just at the hub, but in that area, and I think is a similar thing that I, I talked through with them about, that this is, this is not relating to the private property, and also, I think, important distinction that this is not, as, as you said, this is not to say that we won't maintain these things, that it's just a question of who is doing it, who's paying for it, and I, I am, I'm in favor of dissolving it, I think it makes sense, I think, seeing the assessment this year for that, the fence along First, that's the far east side of this, to be assessing like Pizza Luce and Lake Winds for that, doesn't really seem to make sense. And I think as, as we're moving toward more of these individual maintenance agreements with individual property owners, I think that it makes a lot of sense to, to move past this and get to the point where, yeah, where we're doing more of this. And I, I guess I'm, I'm not sure, my, my question is how much of kind of figuring out the details of how, how trash pickup and the different maintenance pieces, like how that gets worked out? I'm guessing that that would then be a staff role to work out with the individual property manager, or property owners, and whatever city staff are working on it going forward if we do decide to dissolve it? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, if, if this would be a conversation with the property owners, I'm not anticipating too much argument from them getting the assessment removed. And again, like the areas, say the First Avenue Fence area, if they don't mow, or if they don't maintain it, we always have the option to order that work done and have it assessed for problems.
Thank you. Any last comments or weigh-in from folks, there's, no, so I heard Councilmember Wayland say you were in support of it, Councilmember Supple and Troutman?
I, I, I think I'd be in support of it, I, I just, I wanted to clarify, just to make sure I understand the graphic right. So the orange is the district, but the brown are the properties that are actually assessed. So, so the, like the townhomes around like Richfield or Richfield, like those aren't actually assessed, they just theoretically could be if they, if, if we thought they were, they were more directly implicated in the services, is that correct?
Yeah, when the district was created, residential properties were.
Good. Thanks.
Okay, and then Councilmember Supple?
I think it makes sense to move towards the maintenance agreements, since as Councilmember Wayland mentioned, it seems kinda disproportionate if you're doing one side and it's not affecting the other. So I'd be fine with dissolving it.
Thank you, and I would be fine as well, it makes sense to me, and I just have a, a not extremely related, but general comment, because when we are in community, we hear comments from community members, and so there's just a general comment around maintenance with putting in the bike lanes and the sidewalks and the trails, residents that live along those trails saying, hey, we need trash cans and, and things along the trails, because, you know, trash is being thrown in our yard now, and, and things like that, so I understand it's not related to this, but that maintenance along these, these developments in our infrastructure is a comment that I hear a lot. Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, excellent, thank you. Great, well, we, thank you very much, Mr. Link, and we will move to our next work session, and I'll just pass it on to our City Manager.
So Mayor, just wanna sum up, I'm hearing pretty clearly that there's some maintenance to be done, and there's some challenge to be done about garbage.
Yes, thank you.
The next, we have an informational session to discuss the Joint Community Police Partnership Program, which is inspired through Henning County, we have reviewed the program, like we had on Charlotte's College, and before I didn't know her, like Diana, she, and I just wanted to thank her for all the good work and the graduation on.
Yes.
Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Oh, I think it's, yep. There we go.
Hi.
Yes.
So I have a presentation, I wonder. Yes, so first, I'd like to thank everyone for being here tonight, it's really emotional for me, because I love being here, and I miss you guys, even if it's been two weeks. You know, I'm Diana Chama, and I used to be the liaison for the Regional Police Department, and I'm surrounded here by my previous supervisor, Monique, my student, she supervises the Joint Community Police Partnership at Hennepin, and her supervisor, Dawn, who's a manager at Hennepin County, he oversees several programs, and this is one of them, and of course, my chief, Jay Handborn. Hello? Is this one better? Thanks, Simon. So, the purpose of my presentation is basically to tell you about the implementation of the J C P P. As I said, a program that has been sponsored and designed by Hennepin County, and I'm here today to provide some information regarding the program, what we've done, and one of its components, the P M A C, as well as the results of my work. So I'd like to give you some background about the J C P P. What prompted the development of this program? If you're not familiar with community policing, it is both a philosophy and a strategy to identify and respond to community issues in a collaborative way. From the community policing perspective, police are no longer simply guardians of law and order, but also members of the community that are relying on active allies, other members of the community, to enhance the safety and quality of the neighborhoods. So why is this presentation relevant to the city of Richfield? Well, according to M D, forty percent of the Richfield Public School District are Latinos, while fifteen percent are African Americans, twenty-five percent of our students are English learners here, and sixty-two percent of our students are free and reduced. So clearly, there's a lot of need and a gap of disparities in, in this city, which is not, obviously, this happens in other cities of Minnesota. But what this is informing us is that this underlying issues, obviously, are related to crime, and there's a lot of extensive research that correlates crime prevention with disparity reduction, which I think is the overarching theory of change of this program and the value of it. So why is the J C P P model relevant to our work? I'll tell you about it, but first, I would like to explain how this presentation is divided, three parts. So mainly, the J C P P program, the mission. Second, the, the results that we had over the year and a half of work, as well as the overview of how we're informing systems for long-term change. So, the Joint Community Police Partnership is an effort to promote effective crime reduction while building public trust. It's implemented in six cities across Hennepin County, these include Bloomington, Brooklyn Center, Brooklyn Park, Hopkins, Richfield obviously, and Crystal. Its mission is to enhance relationships between police departments and the community, including immigrants, people of color, indigenous people, and faith communities. Our components are several. As you can see, community outreach, which is focused on activities that are meant to shed a light in the humanity of our officers, and creates safe space for community members to, to meet their officers. Capacity development, which involves trainings, developing toolkits, and activities that promote community agency work. Developing partnerships as well, which is, was key for me to expand provision of services and rely on other partners that are focused on housing, food security, domestic abuse prevention, and so on. Finally, direct services is something that I came across when I was looking at my stats. I didn't know that I provided direct services until I realized that I was, and then I'll tell you more about the metrics, but this involved everything from providing information to people to providing aid to victims, from the start, since they arrived to the police department, all the way to after they were looking at the prosecution of their cases. And finally, we had the Police Multicultural Advisory Committee, which is a small group of community members that's meant to support the work of the liaison to build trust with the community. So the model is pretty simple, as I said before, the overarching idea is to focus on disparity reduction as a mean of crime prevention. So the logic behind this model is simple, it's based on community policing principles. We create spaces of interaction with the community, we address community needs through partnerships, and we foster leadership, which in the long term, hopefully, should reduce crime and promote, promote community and police collaboration, so that people can feel safe, supported, and obviously welcomed. We want community to take ownership of their security by actively communicating with the police department, and I see, I can speak for my experience here, that definitely increased, well, at least while I was here, and definitely, I don't think it has changed at all, it's been two weeks. The value of this program, I think it's super important, especially during this political conjuncture. We are aware that demographics are changing everywhere in the States, and that brings a set of challenges and opportunities for our cities. For example, refugees or recent immigrants who come from war zone areas might be afraid of police officers, have a completely different perspective of police officers. I myself, when, before I started, had never had this contact with law enforcement at all, and it was extremely eye-opening and very important for me to listen as well to my fellow immigrants. And overall, the importance of building trust is that truly, by building trust, we can overcome not only crime, but also look at the elements and issues that are hindering our communities from fully developing their potential. So what are the key results to these components? Regarding outreach, we reached over six thousand five hundred and fifty-nine people on the community, we raised twenty thousand dollars on in-kind donations, we developed eighty-four activities to engage with our community, for which our officers volunteer about three hundred and eighty-five times, meaning that on average, at least nine officers were engaging with the community on each event. And this was done through recreational activities, through community events such as the farmer's market, and as you might remember, events such as the back-to-school celebration. So this might look just very simple and not as powerful, but I think this is really the, one of the main elements that creates that space for safety, to build out those connections. Then we have capacity building. And on this component, we train over five hundred and two community members and officers through seventeen trainings. We also develop the toolkit to provide resources to community members and empower them, and I say this because this is very rare in any police department. I personally developed a resource card, both in Spanish and in English, that our officers have been using, so whenever they see a person that's in need, and they clearly see the red flags that this person might need access to housing, or maybe this person need food security, they have this resource card handy to give them to the, the community member, so they could know where to go and ask for help. So unfortunately, in my work, I also realize that there's a lot of domestic crime, crimes happening here, so because that was happening, we decided to develop a prevention fair, and for this, we collaborated with twenty-five agencies across Hennepin County, and we had more than a hundred and fifty people attending. We also co-organized community trainings for Latino men to learn about how to deflect domestic abuse and how to reduce toxic masculinity, and for this, we also worked with two different agencies, Casa Esperanza and Mira, these are just a couple of experiences that we had. And we had lieutenants, sergeants, and officers joining our Q and As and building up that, those connections with our community members. We actually had our graduation session, and, and everyone around here was, was part of it, including my chief. Lastly, we created tools to be shared with the community, such as the famous resource card, and newsletters. So regarding capacity building, we, oh, I'm sorry, regarding strengthening partnerships, we build collaboration with organizations that are valued and used by our community members, half of which are Latino-led, and we build up forty partnerships across a year and a, and a half of work, and because we were so, so successful, we were part of the Board of Law Enforcement Opportunities, which provides opportunities for women of color to achieve higher standards of education. Mujeres Latinas, the Salvation Army Advisory Council invited me to be part of their council. And then we also, we're invited to be part of the Bloomington, Richfield Response Team. And there's a picture there, as you can see, the National Latino Peace Officer Association and the Mujeres Latinas, we worked a lot together on providing services to the community, to the Latino community across Hennepin County, so there was a lot of connection at a county level. Finally, we had direct service, and as I said, I wasn't aware of the direct service that I was doing until I actually looked at my stats. It turns out that there's, there was a lot of it, five hundred and nine cases worked throughout a year and a half. I can tell you, this was the most formative part of my work here, and one of the most formative experiences that I've had in my life, for sure. We looked at cases everywhere from child abuse, domestic abuse, human trafficking, and even to fatalities, and I have my lieutenants here with me, and we were part of those, of that work, we had community members that were in need from the beginning of the first respond, all the way to the process, we were there with them, and even now, I have a couple of these residents that call me on the phone, and I'm really always happy to provide services for them. And this is one of the reasons why domestic abuse and sexual abuse and youth trafficking became so relevant for my personal work. And as you can see, forty percent of the direct service cases was C S Es and domestics, so that seems to be a heavy load of crimes in, in Richfield, and I can say with certainty, hundred percent of them were Latino families, and I, I cannot envision them coming close to the police department and working with someone that wouldn't be willing to work with them in their language from day one.
Excuse me, could you just explain, what is the C S E acronym?
So those are sexually, sexual crimes. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So, moving on to the P M A C. So the purpose of the P M A C is to assist and support the work of the liaison, to build those bridges within the community and the police department. It's not an oversight committee, and it's meant to both communicate concerns about the community, but also to share and disseminate key information to the community, so truly is to be a mediator between the police department and the community, and very much to be the support for the community liaison, because as you can imagine, as a community liaison, there's a lot of work and a lot of relationships to build across the city and within the police department. So in that regard, the profile, expected profile, is that it should be community leaders, people with strong ties to community agencies, and people that are willing to work collaboratively with the police department and other agencies in a constructive way. So, for example, a couple of things that I did when I was working here, we didn't have a concrete set of rules and definitely not tasks, so. So when I came in, there were many things that needed to be organized and done. Definitely, the PMAC was one of them. I wrote this paper that you can see there to show what are the key tasks of the PMAC members and to just confirm that this is not an oversight committee, but a helping body and one of the components of the JCPB program. I count to the times that our PMAC members volunteered and helped us in our work, and those were over 40. I was able to bring some stakeholders to the table, such as people from VEEP, volunteers enlisted to assist people, and Casa Esperanza. So the idea was to professionalize the PMAC. With Casa Esperanza, especially, we did a lot of work with the Latino community. And it was with that person, Felix Martinez, who I implemented a series of trainings on domestic abuse, which was great. Yep. So just a quick overview again. Overall, in almost two years of work, we engaged with over 5,000, I'm sorry, 6,559 people. As you can see, direct service was very heavy 45% of the time, more than I expected it to be. I also have to say that this is a particular element of the implementation of JCPB in Richfield, which may look different than other cities, but it seemed to be a need for this city. And I think it worked well as a way to bring the community, but also to listen to their key needs and to actually be deliberate about resolving their issues and also resolving crimes. And then we had capacity development and community outreach, obviously both very relevant. And a lot of community members that we were able to reach out, even outside the community, truly. There were certain events that we did, and there were people from South Minneapolis, from Bloomington. And so this work had a lot, I think, of impact. And definitely, there was a lot of impact as well on the police department, where we clearly gained a lot of track and certainly a lot of support, which was not the case with previous liaisons. And I think it goes to show the fact that I have all of the command staff here with me, which I greatly appreciate. So informing systems, it's important to know that not only these elements of work for our annual work plans were implemented at a local level, but we're thought to also inform a long-term change of systems. So for example, we had the fact that we helped and implemented a community forum with Latino participants to serve as an input for the child well-being reform at the county level, which now has been implemented. And we work closely with a team at the county level. So we brought a couple hundred people from the community of Richfield, especially Latinos, to inform on what needed to be changed. We also, and I'm including the experience that we had with Maria here, were invited by our mayor to provide recommendations for USPHS based on the Richfield needs. So again, long-term change, things that we can see in the future to be implemented.
Councilmember Supple.
Can you tell us what USPHS is?
Yeah, I believe it's health.
It's the U.S. Public Health Service. So it's the national-level public health folks that we have here across the country. But they came for a national convention and had a chance to speak to them in the community.
Yeah, so. And again, this happened before I left. Again, the presentation to the Richfield Advisory Board of Health, but also to Human Rights, with a set of recommendations to be implemented at a city level. And I'm currently in my new position. I'm looking forward to work again with the police department and the city to focus now on human trafficking, which is now my area of expertise. So I think that speaks volumes about the work that we've done. And it goes to show that it was a strong work, that it was valued not only within the city, but also at a county level. So that's my presentation. I can speak, this is more like a personal approach that I would like to give. The time that I've been in this city, I felt very much part of the city. I think the reason why I was able to have this kind of impact on the community was mainly because I had the support of the police department and the team. And that is next to me, obviously, my supervisor and Don. And I think that there's a lot, obviously, to be done. But based on these very concrete results, I would say that the work that has been done has been very important. Obviously, it has created strong bonds with the community. And I hope to see that this only continues and expands because we need to keep creating that relationship with the community. We've been able together even to bring diversity to the police department. Within the umbrella of the JCPB, we had about six or eight police officers. And you can see one of them, you can see he's a person of color like myself. And bringing that diversity means a lot, especially for residents that need someone that looks like them, that represents them, and that speaks their language. So yeah, that's my presentation. And if you have any questions, feel free to ask. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Any questions from councilmembers? Councilmember Supple.
Well, I just had a comment. First of all, thank you. And I think the direct service component is hugely important. And I'm hoping that, I don't know if they've hired your replacement, but whoever it is can continue that. Because I think that builds that trust if someone is seeing that they can get the help and they can have that direct service. And I think that was a huge thing. So I wanted to say thank you for that because I know it makes a big difference if people are feeling safe and they can get help.
Thank you so much. And I'd like to give just one brief example, because there are many that come to my mind. But this was the latest, the day that I was leaving my position. I came across a lady who was coming to the police department, and she was looking for her husband who had been taken to jail. It turns out that she had been estrangulated by the husband. And so the officers obviously arrested him and took him to Hennepin County. And he might be facing deportation, unfortunately, because he's undocumented, and so was she. So she was threatened by his family to go to the police department and look for him. And after talking and just reassuring her that everything was going to be fine, and lots of tears, obviously, she ended up accepting the help. So we got an officer to provide help to her. I also explained that there is the system of visas that's called UVisas for victims of not only trafficking, but for victims of violent crimes, and that she should be fine. And we would definitely provide her with a letter for her to apply with the help of pro-bono lawyer. So all these different steps that normally wouldn't be, would be looked over. And many situations were key for her to be consistent and decide to testify. And I was very happy because two days after my new position, I got a call from a friend of child protection who actually is embedded at the police department. And she was asking me about a lady who had been in a domestic abuse case. And I asked her if her name was the same name of that person, and it turned out to be the same. So I was glad to hear that she was going to testify because she was afraid to do so. And more than anything, she was afraid of just breaking free. Because many times, and you know better than me, domestic abuse comes with lack of financial freedom. In this case, it was even worse because she didn't speak the language and so many other barriers. So that's where I think we can do better at working collectively with other agencies to provide for this kind of cases.
Thank you. Other questions? Councilmember Wayland.
I just want to echo that, yeah, I think it was very helpful to hear kind of the background of the, like I've seen and heard about a lot of the public-facing things, but to hear more about the direct service, the new partnerships, the providing input to different systems. So it's helpful. And all of that is, I think, vitally important and want that to continue. I don't know if this is a county question or Chief Henthorn question, but were we going to hear the timeline for kind of what comes next in terms of a hiring process and this work continuing?
Sure, I can speak to that. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
All right. We actually are in the hiring process right now. And to your point, Councilmember Supple, I just wanted to be clear that that would definitely be someone that we would look to, someone that has that capacity to be able to do the direct service. Being, as I served as a liaison in the past for almost 10 years, I've got a little bit of experience in that area. And I think what Deanna says, as far as being able to do the direct service, it's just really important. I would say it's one of the main pillars, as well as having your PMAC, your cadet program, and the other supplemental pillars as well. And so that will be going forth, hopefully, in 2020. Does that answer your question?
Yes, yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Go ahead.
One more question. As you guys know, but just to clarify, like, I used to be part of the PMAC and was asked to leave over a misunderstanding of kind of the purpose of the group. So I appreciate that this new, there was previously a membership agreement that I think was less clear. So I appreciate the new clarity here around it not being an oversight committee. I do think, though, one of the key areas for me that was, I guess I'm still hoping for some clarity in talking with some of the current and previous PMAC members, they had questions as well, is about this idea of communicating fellow community members' concerns or misunderstandings about police or law enforcement activities to the liaison and the lieutenant, Lieutenant Draina, who's currently supervising the group. That that's still in the membership agreement, and I think that that work is important. And I guess I, so I appreciate that that's still part of the expectations of PMAC, but I'm wondering what that looks like. Because in the past, when I or others have raised concerns around racial profiling on traffic stops or around like how domestic violence victims are responded to and treated, that those concerns were not always welcomed. And I mean, no one likes to hear that things aren't going how you want, but that I think if that's the case, that we would want to hear that and be able to do something about it. And so I guess I'm hoping for some clarity around like what you picture as a helpful way for PMAC members to communicate those types of community concerns and kind of collaboratively work to solve them. Because I do think that people raising them are not looking just to criticize and be like anti-cop, that they're hoping that we as a community can work together to keep improving.
Yeah, thank you so much for the question. And so I went back to the PMAC agreement. Because if we read through every single one of the tasks, we have helping organize in community meetings. We have sharing and disseminating information to fellow community members about resources, on events and programs. We have familiarizing yourself with the police department. And then we have helping communicate fellow community members. So to look at each one of them separately doesn't make a lot of sense. We would need to look at the entire list of tasks. And I agree that there must be information stemming from the community, but at the same time, it has to, it has to help the community by representing them. So two things. One is to listen to the police department and act as a mediator and understand why the police is acting in a certain way, which sometimes comes with technical know-how that can only be learned if you are exposed to it. And on the other side is obviously representing the community, absolutely, hands down. But I would say this, it's important to be able to work collaboratively. And you use that word liberally, which I am thankful for. I want to give an example of something that I particularly deal with, which is the development of a strategic plan. So I am a project manager by heart. And whenever I work on any program, first thing that I do is, okay, I don't know anything about the needs of this community. I'm going to go out and ask what needs to be done from the experts, who are the community members. When I did this in Richfield, I worked with the public, with the schools, to design a survey, and we launched a survey. So we got information from the community. I had a series of conversations and interviews with key stakeholders, brought that information back to the PMAC. And when I developed the strategy, and by strategy, I mean a logic framework, I didn't have much information. So, I mean, I didn't have any response. And when I also tried to implement a set of ground rules, focusing especially on areas of common interest and agreement, there was kind of a pushback for that. So what I'm trying to say is, I think it's great to have different perspectives, but I think it's also very important to work collaboratively. And in my experience, that was kind of a pushback. And it might have to do with the fact that this was not perceived to be anything but an oversight committee in the past. And that's unfortunate. But I think with this, hopefully with this clarification, it can be more proactive. It can be more engaging. I wanted to rely more on my PMAC, certainly. But at the same time, I felt like there were many other things and many other directions in which the community was trying to get me to work with. So I felt I probably gave more importance to building partnerships outside with key stakeholders. And if we looked at the number of partnerships, which were 40, I think that probably the best way to work with partnerships and bring the PMAC together is by bringing key stakeholders to the table. And I tried to bring more diversity to the PMAC by bringing not only people of color, but also members of key agencies that we were already working with. So I think that I would like to see in the future a PMAC that's thriving, that's collaborating, that's going out in the community, getting information, getting to know the police department. Because from the perspective of a community liaison, which is what it used to be, it's a one-man show, and it's a lot. And when you don't have the support of a team with you, which is supposed to be your PMAC, it makes it even harder. So that's my response.
I think that's an excellent answer. I really appreciate it. If I can add to that, looking at not just Richfield, but all of the JCPB cities that we have, it's really important that each city embrace JCPB because we know that Richfield is different than Bloomington, which is different than Brooklyn Park. So we want not just the liaison, but the PMAC to be unique to what is happening in the community and responding to the needs of the community. What has to be consistent within all of the six cities is a trust level between the police department and the PMAC that seemed, as time went on, may have lessened. I can give a couple examples of other cities where we had an officer-involved shooting a couple of years ago in a different city. And because that city trusted the MAC there so much, they were able to bring some of the evidence about that officer-involved shooting to the PMAC. And the difference it made for the community to understand what happened in that situation, even with the county attorney recommending that they not share that information at that time, the city trusted the PMAC so much and knew they were an extension of the city, they used them, and it turned out to be extremely beneficial. Because the reality is, everyone on the MAC or the PMAC should be a leader of the community. So no one wants to hear my opinion about what happened in an officer-involved shooting, but they absolutely want to hear what a leader in the community who lives down the street, a 62-year-old woman of color who can look at a situation and say, "This is what I saw." That is really important. a 62-year-old woman of color who can look at a situation and say, this is what I saw. That is really important. We also had a second example where a police department was investigating a 10-year-old boy who was murdered by his father. We had people in the Liberian community who couldn't believe that a father would take the life of their own child. The MAC was used twice in that situation, brought in first to calm the community and give them information to say, here are specifics which lead us to believe that the father's involved. And then after the investigation was completed, here's how we can put the community back together because it was so difficult. In both of these examples, you needed to have the police department and the community and the MAC trust each other. That trust can't happen when when we saw some of the things that we saw happening in the last year. So I was one of the drivers to make a decision, we were gonna start over with the MAC coming in the near future. We're inviting all of the MAC members to reapply. We're gonna encourage other community leaders to come forward, and we're gonna create a MAC that hopefully is gonna be working with the police department in a in a in a way where we're gonna have trust and be able to work together to to strengthen the community relationship with the police department.
Councilmember Wayland.
Thanks for the clarity and kind of that process going forward. I think, I mean, really just the big picture, the the theme is trust, and I think I think your assessment's correct that that trust was declining over time rather than increasing. And so I think I think that made it very difficult. I will say, though, that I think the way, if if our goal is to continue to build trust with the community, that we can't ignore the reasons that people don't trust the police department, and that that is is different for different people. And for an increasing number of people who have reached out to me as a city council member, it is related to these more tense topics such as use of force or racial profiling or those things. And so I think if it is not, if if PMAC is not the place for those conversations to happen, then I think we still need to find space for those conversations to happen in ways that can sort of bridge that gap, build the trust, and figure out, like, okay, if we are if if we're concerned from both sides about making sure that all of our residents of of any race can be treated fairly, like, we have that common ground, let's talk about the concerns that are out there and figure out a way forward. And so I I know, and maybe maybe Chief Henthorn or City Manager Rodriguez would be willing to share a bit, but I I think some of the, what you've talked about, about having a forum like that in the in the 2020, and creating some more space for those conversations, I think is really important, too.
One moment, I just wanted to ask, did you have a comment you wanted to make?
I did, actually. Councilmember Wayland, I just wanted to respond to your question about domestics and resources that you could use. I don't know if you remember this or not, but we brought in one of the detectives to a PMAC meeting and gave pretty much how a case would travel through the system from arrest all the way through. And it was very helpful to know how to do that, and then also gave the PMAC more resources to be able to call, whether it be the Domestic Abuse Service Center, whether it be Cornerstone, whoever you would be using as an advocacy agency. And we provided those resources at a PMAC meeting, and then we also gave some steps as far as if an individual from the community had a concern about a way that a case may have been handled, that the point person would have been at the time Lieutenant Flaherty, and to be able to reach out and then navigate through the system. Domestics are near and dear to my heart in that I worked that caseload for about 15 years prior to coming to my position with JCPP. And having resources, it really helps individuals in a very tenuous situation many times to be able to have places to go. And so I think that PMAC is also a really good avenue to be able to have those resources, if you will, introduced. And so my hope would be that we would continue to do that going into 2020 as well.
Thank you. And just going back to Councilmember Wayland's question, or and Chief? Okay, thank you.
When we look at police department planning, we look at it in five-year increments. And we put this Richfield Police Department Five-Year Strategic Plan, I gave the city manager a copy when she took over in January. And it lays out different goals, strategic goals and objectives that we have for the police department. This is a fluid document, it changes, but we we stick to our core principles. And under our strategic goals, we talk about enhancing community outreach activities. And in 2.5, there's a lot of numbers, so I won't go over them all. But we talk about conducting biannual listening sessions with community members and leaders. And that's been in our strategic plan since we adopted it in 2019. So that's what we're planning on doing. We just haven't gotten there yet. But the whole strategic goal, number two, covers just making contact with the community aside from JCPP, listening to the community, seeing what the concerns are, and trying to resolve any concerns that the community has, but also educating the community on what the police department does, what we can do, what we can't do, what are limitations based upon statutes and ordinances. So it's important that we do that. This has been on our timeline for a couple of years, and we're gonna move in the community in 2020 and start doing that.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Thanks, Mayor. Just a quick comment, again, comparing Richfield to the other JCPP cities. The description that you had about bringing concerns to the police department happens in all of those other cities. The difference is, we've had these other cities be able to work together to say, how do we address these issues without it becoming more combative? What we hope to do is we want to have the MAC work with the community, with the liaison, with the police department, so we're able to address those issues in a positive constructive way. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I will say something. I wanted to see if there was anyone else. So primeramente, I want to say thank you so much to Deanna for your work. I have seen the impact of your work in the community. I've heard it from residents. Thank you to the command staff and the staff who are here as well, and for the support of the department and chief of Deanna's work. You've also taught me a lot of of things. And I appreciate your partnership and support in that, and we will continue to work together, so I look forward to that. So I just want to say thank you from the bottom of my heart, and your impact has been tremendous in a short period of time, and the county is very lucky to have you. So so thank you for that. I had a technical or a logistical question, going back to the direct services. I wasn't matching up the colors and then what you were saying, so this is very impactful to me as well. And I wanted to make sure that I had it correctly. So the 40% is the CSC in domestics, or it it looks like it's a different color. And then there's the 26%. I just want to make sure I get these percentages correct, because...
Hello? Let me see. So yes, so the CSC and domestics are the, oh no, 26%.
That's what I was thinking, it was 26.
26%, 40% partnership aid, which happened, that's sort of like my way of saying, this is when I took over a case, and I helped them either get a social worker or work with another agency that we work closely with. 18% was theft, 5% was immigration, which, why would someone come to a police department? But still, that shows that a lot of people would come here for anything. So this immigration cases had to do with, I don't know where to go. I am undocumented. Okay, let me get you a list of pro bono lawyers. Here are the places that you can go to. Tell me about your case. And few of them also cases of people that are in the process of being deported or had had a family member who was in the process of being deported. There was a case in particular that I worked with, my fellow liaison from Bloomington PD. Her mother, she was 17 years old, and she was the oldest of a group of kids. Her mother was a single mom, and she had been in the process of being deported. So we set up basically an entire strategy for her to be sustained. Brought a social worker from Hennepin County. We worked with Veep as well to get some services for her to apply to AMFEEP and a series of of things that could help her out, where we were trying to look for a way out to get her mom out of of that situation. But these are just like a couple of cases that we went through. So this was very formative and very emotional. And then fatalities, unfortunately, and violent crimes, which, again, I was I was personally part of with our officers, our lieutenants, and particularly Lieutenant Giff, who's sitting over there. Yeah, and he was, I think, a little worried about me seeing these cases. But those were very formative, I'll say. And going back to your comment, I'm very grateful. I will be honest with you guys. On a more personal note, the first day of my new position, I was feeling the, I was feeling the difference of being out of my home. And so I came here after a day of work, and I brought four dozens of donuts, and I found Chief, because he was like 5:30 or so. I just, I I am still feeling like I'm coming home, in a way. So please know that I very much love this city. I consider this city my home to a certain degree, although you know I'm Peruvian. But I I hope that I can do my best to keep helping the prosperity and the development of of this community, and please always count me in as an ally. I hope that we can do more on human trafficking. I hope there's no human trafficking whatsoever, but if there are cases or if there's a way to prevent it from happening, or any way that I could be helpful to the city, I will be happy to to be a resource for you guys.
Thank you. And I just had one question, and I want to make sure we have time for any final comments or questions. But if you could just briefly share a couple recommendations that you would have for us as a city, community, police department council to help keep moving your work forward and the work that's been going on, could you share those, please?
Thank you so much. So the first thing, I I think, thinking of the upcoming census, maybe looking for a way to engage more with our minorities, especially Latino, the Latino community. Obviously, for political reasons, they are kind of hiding, but there's a really big number of undocumented folks living here. Many families that are living in very limited conditions with poor housing and lack of access to basic services. There's a lot of domestics that need to be solved, and I think that just bringing that information out to the community for the families, especially women, unfortunately, to know that there's a way out, and that there are services out there for them and agencies. This is something that I've seen everywhere, and just gonna repeat it. Oftentimes, we work in silos, and there's so much going on, and especially in Richfield. What I love about Richfield is that there are so many people like you guys are super engaged, and there are a gazillion of agencies and nonprofits and a lot going on. But if we can bring them all together and set up a strategic plan for the city, that would be fantastic. At some point, I remember talking with Councilmember Troutman about the idea of doing like a workshop for the city and just bringing like the leaders of the city and designing a strategic plan for the key issues of the city. I think that would be amazing. That's something that I'm actually trying to do for my work currently. So that's basically it. One more thing that I would say, and this is kind of just like a wish, I know that we're going through hardships, and there are always times of crisis, naturally. But I think, and I hope for all representatives, to take a stance of of a public servant, which is to be neutral, and to understand that it is, at times of crisis, it is our job to be that glue that brings the community together. That's all.
Thank you very much. Any last final comments or questions? Councilmember Supple.
Um, I had a, I don't know if it's pertinent to this or not, but I know the police department just rolled out the whole vitals app and all that. And I understand that the disability community covers all ethnicities and all cultural groups, but is there any discussion of that on the PMAC? Does that ever come up, or is that just a separate thing that the police department is doing?
That's a separate, Councilmember Supple, that's a separate issue that we're dealing with, with the police department and the fire department, working through all the vitals. We had an onboarding meeting that was very successful. We had over 25 people from the different communities that we deal with within the city, and we're also working with the Dementia Friends group, and we're also working with Best Buy to possibly provide computers so that people that don't have access to computers can sign up for the system. So we haven't rolled that out into JCPP yet.
Thank you.
Any, Councilmember Troutman.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say, you know, thank you and and good luck, Deanna. I I was I was by the the Hennepin County Government Center this week, and I saw you from a distance, very, very wistful. You were you were off doing your business, we were and I was I was doing something else, but we're just really happy and proud of you, and you did great work here, and so you're you'll obviously be missed. And and to to our law law enforcement, say it often, I can't say it enough, we appreciate you guys, we you you do, and gals. You you do hard work, and I I'm always looking for ways to recognize that, and I'll continue. And as you guys think, and our Officer Draina's back there in Communications, we're always looking for opportunities to just know how we can promote that good work. I also, but I also would want to echo Councilmember Wayland's concerns, then, and I heard words trust and sort of combative, as contrary to trust and things like that, that we we have to work really hard to create spaces of trust, and trust doesn't mean you said something I don't like. That's not a violation of trust. Saying things that people don't like is how we build trust. And I know we got, we got lots of pain, we got lots of pain in here, lots of pain out there. We have pain in our community, and I just want to cast a hopeful vision for our community, which is, we're gonna, we're we're all going to we're all going to hear, we we have heard things that we, all of us didn't want to hear, and we all have things that are misunderstood. I think the, tonight or tomorrow night is probably not the end of misunderstandings. But it is, I I am really hopeful that tomorrow night, we're gonna have more trust than we did tonight. And the night after that, we're gonna have more trust after that. And I just wanna, I want to publicly say, I appreciate you guys. I'm committed to that work. I know our council's committed to that work. We are deeply grateful to our law enforcement. And we're, we're, we're all, we're all here for the long haul. And and so, so I just wanna, I want to I want to end on hopefully a grateful note, but just also just echoing echoing the work that Councilmember Wayland's talking about, too.
Thank you. Any last comments? Councilmember Wayland?
Again, I I do appreciate all of this work. I think it's super important. I I want to take a moment to thank the the people who have put years of their time, have been on the PMAC group for years. I I want to believe that it was a genuine misunderstanding that has led to many of them leaving on less than positive terms. But I I don't think it's a great foundation for the future to have to have our our public leaders describing them as combative and unwilling to support our liaison. And so I I guess I would hope that going forward, as we try and build that that trusting cooperative group that works together, that that we don't just assume that it was a fault of previous PMAC members, and that I I hope that the the department and the county has learned something, too. And just, I I want to appreciate the many, many hours of hard work and volunteering that those members have put in, and want them to know, since I know some of them are planning to listen to this recording, that that the the only words to describe them should not be combative or unwilling to support our liaison.
Any final comments? Deanna?
Hello? Yeah. Um, so, yeah, I, I don't think that anybody described them as unwilling to support or combative. But I think it's different when you start, um, when you're invited to a part of a program without clearly knowing a mission. So I think that, that was, that's why it was so important to redefine the mission of the PMAC as one of the, of various components of a program. So, um, I agree. I think that it's very important to, um, leverage on this program and on one of the components of the program to keep developing the relationships with the community. And, and, um, moving forward, especially, um, with, um, representatives such as you. It's also important to bring that support to the police department and to, to the future members of the PMAC. And especially to the future liaison, because whoever takes charge of this program is going to be the face of the JCPP and is going to be the person that's going to be facilitating those conversations. So I hope that we, we can keep developing those relationships, going back to, um, Councilmember Troutman's, um, comment of working collectively and collaboratively and going one day at a time.
Thank you so much for coming back af- um, after your two weeks away. And we look forward to working with you and continuing our work as a city to build, um, trust with our community. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. I adjourn this meeting.